Good evening, my name is Zara Roach and I'd like to welcome you all to the Pasco Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council on changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, considering the impact of land use, decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. To perform our duties, the Planning Commission holds formal public review via public hearings and workshops. The city council then takes the testimonies, facts, and findings, and our recommendations we create and make the final decision on those matters. So, to begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the meeting clerk to take role.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Joseph Campos.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Zara Roach.
Present.
Pam Byconan.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Seven present, we have a court.
Thank you, and now to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on City of Pasco's Facebook page and on PSC Channel 191 on Charter Cable, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. This meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video-on-demand link and you will make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask you to turn off your cellphones to prevent interruptions during your meetings. So that would go for Planning Commissioners and staff. For those present this evening when you were given the opportunity to address the commission, and there is nobody here currently, please come to the podium, speak your name clearly into the microphone, state your name, and add just your first and last name. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires that public meetings and hearings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in a hearing or a decision in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. So first, are there any Planning Commissioners who have a declaration at this time about the agenda items? Looks like a bunch of heads shaking no. So let the record show there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience who would object to any of these Planning Commissioners? And for those of you watching at home, there is no one in the audience to object, so we will scoot along. We as a Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the record, so that the city council will use it to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the June meeting. These minutes were mailed out to Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 20th Planning Commission meeting.
Second. Just a minute, Byconan. So let's see, was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Byconan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show that it passed unanimously. And do we need any other further instruction on this item from staff? Nope. Okay, so then let's go on to our old business. In old business, we have, A, a code amendment regarding maximum dwelling height in R3 and R4 zoning districts, Master File CA 2019-009, and I will let staff introduce this item.
There's nothing additional to report, Madam Chair, unless the commission has questions.
Okay. Do Commissioners have any questions about this item? No, feel sufficient, then I will entertain a motion. Or, I need a motion to close the -- it's not even a public hearing, excuse me. I would entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommend to the city council the adoption of the proposed amendment to increase the maximum dwelling height in R3 and R4 zoning districts as contained in the July 18th, 2019 memorandum.
Second. So it was moved by Commissioner Cochran, seconded by Commissioner Bowers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. And what will happen to this item?
It will proceed to city council at the next workshop, so the first, second Monday in August.
Okay, thank you. On to old business, item B, code amendment regarding sidewalk requirements, Master File CA 2019-001. And is there any further information on this before we?
There is, there's just an additional map that provides the sidewalk inventory, I believe that was asked at the last commission meeting, that some of our staff conducted, I believe, in mid-2018. So as of that date, the sidewalk inventory, I believe you can see, I think, the next map, or maybe didn't make it. It should be in your report then. I think the third map shows the sidewalk inventory in the black dash lines across the city with the zoning designations identified in there as well. Other than that, no changes?
Thank you for that additional information. Are there any Commissioners at this time who have any questions or comments about this item or the map that was included?
Yeah, I had a question.
Okay, go for it.
So I think the additional map looked like it is transit stops within those areas. And that's great, because I think that's one of the things we talked about last month, was, is that what the, it looks like it's BFT stops, so that kind of shows where the stops are. I think one of the things I was interested in from last month is, do we have an idea, any data? I mean, the BFT guy was here last month, so he's not here this month, but do we have any idea about the ridership frequency or volumes in those areas? Because one of the things I question is whether, do we need to like force everybody to build sidewalks, and the motivation or the driver is transit? But if low-density areas don't have a lot of transit ridership, is that really a good reason to move forward on that?
So there is ridership data, and I apologize for that not being included in the report, but we can definitely have that to give that back to the commission. There is ridership data available on routes and on bus stop facilities. In terms of whether the lack of ridership warrants, street improvements, or sidewalks, I think another way to look at it would be, would, if proper infrastructure and a safe way to access the sidewalks existed, I'm sorry, access the facilities existed, would that promote better usage of the transit ridership?
So I mean, it's kind of a build it and they will come argument, or?
It could be both ways, I guess.
Yeah, you can go, I see you both ways. The other thing I was questioning about, one of the things I thought, asked about last month was, if you look at, is it that you want to do it one size fits all for the entire low-density zones? Or do you want to look at key feeders that feed those stops and kind of create an approach in the code, rather than just eliminating the lines in the code, actually create a, almost a tailored approach that says, "Look, let's choose key feeders based on ridership and then dictate sidewalks." So that was one of the questions, if there was any additional fodder on that.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that there's still a line item available in Title 21 that allows the city engineer and public works department to alter that, if there's a situation that says, "Well, this just isn't appropriate for whatever it is we're asking for." So that's, there's still that flexibility allowed within the municipal code for that. But for all others, specifically larger subdivisions, we want to make sure this is in place as we continue to see rapid development in that part of town.
Great, thanks, I appreciate that. And so that thing for the city engineer to make that call, are flexibilities in another part of the code?
It's in Title 21, is it? I'm sorry, Title 12.
Cool, all right, thanks.
Any other questions from Commissioners to staff at this time? I have a question about timeline. What is the timeline in scope or range of time in rolling this out, this plan?
If approved here, it would go to city council at the workshop in August, second meeting?
Okay.
In terms of when it would be implemented?
Implemented, yes.
Immediately, as soon as we're allowed to, as soon as it's approved by council?
Okay. Any other questions? Looks like that's a no, otherwise I would entertain a motion.
I move the Planning Commission recommend to the city council the adoption of the proposed code amendments for street improvements in the RS12 and RS20 residential zoning districts as contained in the July 18, 2019 Planning Commission staff report.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, so let the record show it was moved by Abel Campos, seconded by Commissioner Byconan, and it was passed unanimously. And so we'll see that, this will go to city council, and what was the next step? Be adopted immediately?
Yeah.
Okay. So on to our public hearing items, and the first is a special permit for the location of a museum annex building, Master File SP 2019-002, and it's continued from a previous meeting. And I'm going to hand this over to staff to reintroduce if there is any need for that.
No, we're asking again, we're recommending that this be again continued to a further date. Right now, the historical society is waiting for a, some comments regarding a proposed shared agreement with the Rite Aid facility to the south to jointly use the parking lot to the south. The applicant has been on the record, I think twice here at commission, stating that the parking required in the PMC is somewhat challenging for them, and also the need for it is also questionable. So one of the staff recommendations was to reduce parking and alter the site plan because of the special permit process allows them some flexibility. So we're working with the applicant and hoping that they get some information back from the Rite Aid folks, and we'll bring that back to commission with any further updates.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from staff at this time?
Is there a certain percentage that they are allowed to use from the Rite Aid parking lot, or they could just use?
I think that's what they're hoping to find out. Right now, it's a private parking lot, but publicly used, so there's sort of, kind of an open usage of it. It's used for all of the events held in downtown Pasco. In addition to the availability of that specific lot, there's over 100 parking stalls available on Bonneville and Fourth Avenue within one block of the proposed annex building, along with some parallel parking available on Fourth Avenue, which is why staff had recommended taking a deeper look at this item.
But as far as the city side, there is no, like, regulations that we say, you know, you could only use 40% of a private property. There's, it's just based on whatever they feel comfortable with. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, no, I'm seeing head shakes. Okay, so the motion, looking for a motion.
I move to continue the public hearing for the special permit on the proposed location of annex building for the Franklin County Museum in the R3 zoning district to a later date.
Second.
It's going to take me a minute to learn new last names, I apologize. Okay. I keep flipping back to revisit that. So moved by Commissioner Jay Campos, seconded by Commissioner Cochran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show it passed unanimously, and then we will see this at some future date, we don't know when.
Yep.
Okay, great. So moving on to item B, code amendment regarding provisions to planned unit developments, Master File CA 2019-010. And I will hand this back over to staff. Go ahead.
Yes, hello again. This again was something that you saw a few times over the past few months, actually now, but in a little bit more of a comprehensive approach taken at the June meeting. This is for primarily a reduction of the minimum site area required to utilize a planned unit development here in the City of Pasco. Right now, the minimum site required is 10 acres, and that's challenging, and it's also a little bit against what the ordinance proposal is to do, which is to provide some flexibility in the zoning code. So as, nothing has changed from the last report, the only thing that has been added is just the question of the density bonus. Right now, it is 20% across all zoning designations, and what was stated at the previous meeting was leaving it at 20% for the low-density and mixed residential land uses, with an increase to 30% in the high and mixed residential, commercial land uses to further promote density in areas that council and commission sees appropriate. However, the PUD ordinance as currently written is rather broad in terms of what counts for, or what qualifies for a density bonus, so staff would like some additional time to go back and do some research, and also listen to commission, and see if there's some additional feedback on what they think about the density bonus, and also the open space requirement. The current PMC requires 30%. There's a table that identifies what similar-sized jurisdictions and larger jurisdictions have for their open space requirement. We are proposing a reduction to 15% to better align us with that, and to actually utilize this tool in the zoning ordinance for development. So we're asking for the item to be continued.
So we are, commission is going to give staff direction on two different things. One is the open space requirement, and the other is the density bonus. So if there are any Commissioners at this time who have any comments about those two I agree with staff in that 35% of open space is overly burdensome, and 15% sounds much better as far as the open space requirement goes. When it comes to the density bonus, I do appreciate the percentage difference between the low-density and the mixed residential, 20%, versus the high-density residential, mixed residential being 30%. So I'm on board with that. The design features for that density bonus, and these are just ideas that I was thinking about today, was, you know, maybe having, we've talked about this in the past when we've talked about comprehensive goals. I remember Commissioner Bowers and I had a conversation once about creating neighborhoods that had some sort of theme. Maybe that's just with, like, the vegetation that we have in land strips, so kind of, we talked about like a magnolia district where maybe a neighborhood would have a certain, that's just an example, certain type of trees. But it would be above the level of, like, basic requirement that the city has. Something like, you know, fountains or sculptures, or maybe themed lighting. As far as recreational, I know we have the example of sun willows, so as a planned unit development. So golfing is obviously a recreational amenity, but maybe pool. And then we have certain parts of the city that are very rural, so I was thinking along with terms of something equestrian-oriented might even be applicable if it was in that area. So those are just some ideas to toss out, if there are any Commissioners who have any other ideas about amenities or features that... The other thing I was thinking about was, you know, we've had an issue in the city with fencing, with graffiti, and so, you know, vinyl, something above vinyl fencing, and definitely not like chain-link fence, but a higher quality, higher standard in those features and designs. Does that help at all?
It does, and I know on the last, on the last page of the report, there's the suggested wording for the definition of open space that does not exist currently in our municipal code. So this is something that we would appreciate some guidance or feedback on, if there is any, with regards to how open space is defined, because obviously this will be used to calculate that percentage in the PUD, but also if the applicant or developer does do something above and beyond, then they, and that would qualify, or may qualify them for a density bonus, then we want to make sure that our definition is broad enough to capture appropriate styles and types, but also enough for us to put some parameters on what is and is not allowed.
Okay. Did you have anything to add?
At the last meeting, you had said that some definitions consider balconies as the open space, so it would be something that would not be like that, but would be more like a park or a pool, or something the whole community would have access to. That's kind of the wording you're trying to go for, is that correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and for example, the part of the suggested wording is required open space may include pedestrian walkways, parkland, open areas, pathways, landscape drainage ways, detention basins, swimming pools, clubhouses, golf courses, and/or recreation. No mention of balcony will be in there, so.
So is that something you'd like right now, is feedback on that definition? Or was, is that something you're looking for in the future?
If there is any, gladly take it, and make necessary changes if there are any to make, but I think our next step would be to do one more check at the staff level, then bring it back for an approval at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. So are there suggestions at this time of wording or verbiage to include in this definition of open space, common open space, and how to define it? Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
So I actually have a different question that doesn't have to do with the question you just asked. I recall about a year and a half ago, we had some developers come who were talking about the Broadmoor area, and I think they were from, they'd done a lot of stuff in Oregon. I don't know if that sounds familiar. And I'm just wondering how this would end up impacting the plans for Broadmoor.
Yeah, well, Broadmoor is still being, the master plan area is still being developed, and there's some processes with, like, an EIS still being developed for the Broadmoor area, but within that master planning area effort, there is specific, there will be specific design standards for the various land uses that will be allocated out in that area. So the PUD would probably have to fall in line with, making sure that they could follow these rules, but also if there's underlying rules of the land use beneath it that they would still have to fall in line with.
I might just add that the PUD example here is probably unlikely to be used in Broadmoor because it's, the regulatory framework is completely different than the rest of the Pasco. It offers flexibility at the outset in terms of the mix of uses and the densities, although the developer you mentioned, Paleish Homes, they did a standard subdivision, but their model is much more like a PUD than anybody else's model is. So I wouldn't expect to see it being rapidly, or widely applied in Broadmoor, but I think during, in those difficult-to-develop areas in the existing city limits that are already served by utilities essentially, I think it will be a tool that will be used.
That's great to know, good information. And then Commissioner Cochran, you have something?
I just had a question. You've been great about providing comparisons with other cities or other areas, and are there other, I mean, I like the definition of common open space that you have, and I like the addition of recreation, but I don't know what I don't know, so it'd be really great if there's, are there other definitions for PUD common open spaces from other cities or counties or other places that we could look at and compare as, that, hey, this is pretty representative of a definition?
Yeah, I could bring that back at the next Planning Commission meeting. I do know that there was an effort, I believe in mid-2017, that was strictly based on the open space requirement, so I went back and looked at that research to make sure that I wasn't starting from scratch, that there was some already conversations at the commission level about the open space requirement. I think the only thing I added was recreation at the end, but I can definitely come back and look at what some other jurisdictions are using for open space, but, you know, we can figure out what commission would like to go with or move forward with at that time.
Thank you, and we can also open this up to the public. If there's somebody in the audience who would like to come and speak about this item, you can come to the podium and state your name, and make a comment if you wish. No? Okay, well, then any other comments from Planning Commission as to open space definition to density bonus comments, or? Yes, Commissioner Bowers?
I was actually thinking about within Riverview area, there was that, the development that some residents wanted us to enter into the comprehensive plan, something Del Sol, and part of it was an amphitheater. Is that the sort of thing that you want to include in here, like entertainment, open entertainment venues?
I think within a PUD, I'm not sure if amphitheater open to the general public might fit that. In general, I think it's open, but only to the folks that reside within the development itself.
One of the other things that I had heard about other cities such as Hood River are just sustainable development practices, and applying those, that maybe perhaps that could apply to density bonus as, you know, design features or amenities.
Yeah, absolutely. Hood River, and I believe Ellensburg, Washington, have provisions in the open space requirement that if they do use modern or sustainable techniques within their open space, or the development of the community itself, that that would qualify as a reason to approve of a density bonus. So I think ours is broad enough to cover something like that, but as it exists right now, there's not really a, the lack of open space definition is, really leaves it up to whoever reads it. So this at least will get something in the books, put something concrete in the municipal code.
I think even if there were something to the effect of, you know, walkways, bike paths, things like that, within the gardens, within the definition of open space, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Things that are for the, you know, public use and recreation. Anybody else have anything else to add? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Morales.
I would just, to consider two things, when you, bringing these recommendations back, we're discussing them, is first, as it relates to what you qualify as open space, sometimes in some of these other city codes, in my experience, one in particular, it wasn't what was in the code, it what wasn't. And then you are allowing administrative discretion to do things that probably aren't in any greater interest of what we want to do. So, you know, I've seen a 300-unit apartment complex get credit for all of its balconies as open space, you know, and all of a sudden you got kids who are just, you know, warehoused in there because there's no recreational space for them to be in, so you have to be careful about, you know, wanting to be specific about it, so you don't let that sort of thing simply the cracks down the road. Secondly, is, as far as the amenities that you and Ms. Bowers were discussing, you want to be mindful of, a lot of times those things are driven by market forces, and so we don't want to be too restrictive or prescriptive on what you must do when, you know, the market isn't there for it, you know, maybe at some point, but somebody's going to, you know, work their, pencil out their project on what they think the market wants, and, you know, at some point it'll feel more like that here. And right now, everything's just coming at us so quickly, but as incomes rise, as they're rising in Pasco, as educational attainment rises, as it's rising in Pasco, you're going to see a little bit more, you know, selective development and a selective market, and so for some of these amenities that you can place in there, that developer will say, you know what, this is a demand we can fit, rather than say, you must have one of these things, or say, in this part of town, you must have it. I echo what Mr. White has mentioned, that this is really a tool that's going to ideally help us in this center of the city that has very low density and is difficult to assemble and develop into the current standards that we have. So that will be a plus there. Unfortunately, I think you can't have livestock in city limits, so the equestrian part might be out of the question, but that is something that's talked about in other places, where if you have development outside of a city, that there's going to be a movement toward experience housing for people. experience housing for people who are aging and I want to take my horse, you know, or want to be near my horse where I'm going to be. And so you can probably see that coming into market, but it'll be more on the outskirts of the city.
Thank you for that clarification, and that actually makes me think of a different question that I have, and that is, can planned unit developments be specific to certain age groups? So can they be targeted to retirement sort of community? That wouldn't qualify for a planned unit development.
No, I don't think any development can, yeah.
You get into hot water trying to make things.
Indiscrimination, essentially age discrimination there.
Pretty much.
Okay, good to know. Any further questions or comments at this time? We're going to move this right to another meeting, so we can keep the public hearing open. So I would entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
I move to continue the public hearing on the revisions to the Planned Unit Development Ordinance to the August 15, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt, but we'd like to just put at the, at a date to be determined later, just to give us some time to thoroughly go through this.
So I'm going to take out the date and say that again?
At a date to be determined?
Yeah. Go for it.
What I just said, you want me to say it over again?
Sure. Why not?
I move to continue the public hearing on the revisions to the Planned Unit Development Ordinance to a date to be determined.
Second.
Okay. So, move by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Joe Compost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let the motion show that it passed unanimously, and we'll be seeing it in the future at some point. Onto item C of the public hearing, which is 2020 Community Development Block Grant allocations, master file BGAP 2019-003. And staff can take over.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is the second of two public hearings. The first was held last month where you heard a number of parties explaining their proposals. The difference now is that in your report, you have what the agencies, the listed agencies requesting funds, the non-community development block grant match, the agency request, and then finally in the middle column is a staff recommendation. So the staff recommendation is essentially, we have a little more money this year, but essentially the percentages is just about identical to the last several block grant cycles in terms of the mix and the amounts that are recommended for the commission's consideration. The material that was on your bench before you started the meeting was placed there in order to add number 15 to the recipient list, which is a permanent supportive housing project. And that has come up recently. You have an email on the bench as well that explains in very brief fashion an effort by a group called the Hotspotters, and I'm just going to read from the email, which is a collaboration of first responders, legal providers, city and county judges, mental health treatment providers, housing organizations, and state health and human service agencies that created a group that would help provide what's called low barrier housing. And what this is, is emergency housing for homeless, for the housing challenged segment of our population. Currently, the tri-cities in general doesn't have what's called the low barrier housing opportunity. So if you are needing emergency housing, you A, either get it from your church, or you are clean and sober when you go into a facility. The overwhelming evidence as of late has indicated that what is of prime importance in avoiding chronic homelessness is the ability to have housing first, regardless of religious affiliation or history or practice of alcohol or substance abuse. So Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington has a number of these low barrier housing projects in Spokane. They enlisted to study, I think it was about six months ago, maybe, or so, maybe a little bit longer, seven months ago, to study the tri-city region as a whole, and they have, the study concluded that there were enough homeless to, in fact, make a project similar to the Spokane projects work out. So what we've done is added that as a contingency to the block grant allocation spreadsheet that you're looking at right now, and then to the two further items on the agenda, the home program and the neighborhood stabilization program. So they haven't asked for money, but this is a project that would be squarely in the middle of what the block grant programs are intended to do, which is help low to moderate income people achieve public, or excuse me, housing or equality of life that's an improvement from what they're experiencing now. So again, no money is requested out of the current mix of funding, but as a contingency, if there is money available, it could be used as long as it's in the contingency portion of your recommendation to city council.
So I'm, the timing is uncanny on seeing this, because as I was reading through the CDBG and then NSP and home consortium, home program, excuse me, I was thinking exactly that was how do we get to giving funds to the, it's called the CHDO, the Community Housing Development Organization? And so last, within the last month, this month, somebody who works, who's a volunteer here locally, who works with the homeless, she was, approached me and asked me about what can be done to help people that have been kicked out of the hotels. And essentially, I gave her the answer about, you know, having those hotels coming up to code, which is the single residency occupancy. And, you know, she, she's done a lot of the legwork of meeting with these business owners themselves, because she's finding placement for people after they've been in the hotel for 28 days, and then on the 28th day, they get kicked out, and they have to be kicked out for approximately 24-hour period before they can re-enter back into basically what is they're, they're using as their long-term housing. And so there's only a couple nonprofits in town that give hotel vouchers, which gets to be a little bit difficult to, to kind of not, to get those for as many people that are being kicked out in that, after those 28-day period. And so as I was talking to her, I was, and reading this, I was thinking, this is, you know, a really needed solution for what we have going on in our city, especially in the downtown area, where we have some of those older hotels that aren't in conformance and are housing people as long-term housing. So I don't know what, what the option is as far as making it a priority instead of a contingency. Is that even a possibility there?
No, they haven't applied. It's a staff-added contingency, and we don't have a project yet, so we know of no funding amount that's required or requested, and they don't have a location yet either.
Let me just go through the hypothetical. So if nobody applies for home, or NSP for that matter, and that money is just sitting there, and then Catholic charities comes in and says, we would like this amount, then that would then be the contingency that we could reroute that money to that organization for this purpose?
Yeah, the advantage of a contingency is that you don't have to reopen the whole process again, and then they can apply for as much money as they want. Currently, I might be getting into too much detail about your question, but currently the home program, for example, gets a certain amount of money that's devoted specifically to community housing development organizations, CHODOs. That's been extremely hard to spend lately, and unless it isn't spent soon, probably within a year or two, it will go back to the federal source that it came from. So this would be a perfect project, for example, for that to be applied towards. I don't know that there's enough money. Our portion of home funds is only $107,000 this year, so that might not be anything that's that valuable for a project like this, which is estimated to be maybe $12 million or $13 million in total cost. But that cyclical money that used to be rotated between the three cities could definitely be a source of significant funding, and it helps with their grant applications because it's a source, or it's a token, it's a documented source of local community support. So, yeah, it could be.
Okay. That's good to know that that money is there for that reason.
Go ahead, Commissioner Kovis.
Correct, Jordan. Jordan, excuse me. They haven't selected a location yet. Do we know if they're going to be selecting it in Pasco? Or are they looking at the greater tri-cities area?
They, my understanding is they have four locations they're looking at in Pasco, and Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington is a Spokane diocese-based organization. The Yakima Diocese has a similar organization, but not, they're not quite there yet, and Kennewick and Richland are in the Yakima Diocese. They have expressed, or excuse me, Catholic Charities of Eastern Washington out of Spokane has expressed an interest in looking at Kennewick and Richland, but we're not quite there yet.
And so Catholic charities would then, if it did apply for that, would then maintain and run that community housing development organization? Could it, could local business owners who have those downtown hotels sell that property to and repurpose that money?
They don't, they don't want to deal with a site that has an existing building.
Okay. Got it.
It's too expensive. The retrofitting is just too problematic and costly.
Thank you for answering that. Any other questions about this? Okay, well, there, I didn't even let you finish your report.
Well, essentially, I am finished. I can go through these, but you can see the staff recommended amount. Just real quickly, the home, the first, second, third, and fourth recipients, those are all funding levels that the commission, and the fifth, YMCA, those are all funding levels that the commission, at least the, not, the older members of the commission are all familiar with. We do this every year in essentially the same amounts. The downtown Pasco Development Authority had a, we give them $100,000 a year and have for several years. The chip owner occupied minor rehabilitation, that is a little bit new, but it's program income that has come our way by people that took advantage of this program in the 90s, selling their homes. So the money has to go back to block grant, and it has to be used for housing improvements. So that's what we have received so far in program income, so that's what it is intended by law to be used for. Code enforcement officers, $70,000 this recommendation cycle, as well as last recommendation cycle. The Section 108 debt repayment, that is for the 3.8 million?
3.7 million.
Yeah, 3.8 million that the city is utilizing from the Section 108 program that allows us a big chunk of money based on our allocation from block grant to be used for the Farmers' Market and Peanuts Park area. That'll, first phase of the revitalization effort along those lines. The recreation scholarship program that's operated by the city, $4,000, I think that's the same as last year. And then we had some money that we will also be applying towards the downtown area for the Public Work Department to utilize for safety and aesthetic improvements along Lewis Street in particular, to match with the Lewis Street Overpass project that should get started by the end of the year.
Is that the Section 108 debt payment that covers some of that?
Yeah, well, that specifically will go for the public space in the Farmers' Market and Peanut Park Pavilion. Arc of the Tri-Cities, you heard that presentation last month from, I can't remember the operator's name, but you recall that. We did not recommend funding for the Historical Society Museum for their garden and parking area associated with their annex building. It's simply a little bit before its time, as evidenced by tonight's continuation of the special permit process. And then the Hood Expansion Project for the Pasco Specialty Kitchen was not recommended for approval either. Anyway, I'll try to answer questions the commission may have, or.
Thank you for answering that question.
Try to explain the rationale for the recommendations.
Yeah, that was a question that I had about the Heritage Demonstration Garden, and I appreciate that you answered that.
I think Commissioner Bowers has a question or comment.
So for the Pasco Recreation Scholarship Fund, do we have any idea where they get the rest of their funding?
Well, it covers fees for participation in the summer program, so the funding comes directly from fees.
Well, I'm just saying, they asked for eight, so since we're only giving them four, my concern was how else are they covering the additional $4,000?
That's to be determined case by case. I can't answer that one.
And the, and more or less the same question with ARC therapeutic? We don't know?
No.
I'm good at making assumptions. I just assume that they're probably from private donors or maybe even additional state aid. Not that it matters, just as by curiosity that they're commissioners.
I know that Arc of the Tri-Cities also applies to City of Richland, and they probably apply to City of Kennewick for CDBG dollars as well.
And we don't always historically match exactly what they request, so, I mean, that's precedence that we've set. Any other questions or concerns about the amounts, or organizations, or projects? So what we're seeking here is a motion, and what is the motion? I don't see the motion. There it is, on the first page. I have not opened it up to a public hearing. Is there anybody else who, out here in the audience, who'd like to come speak to this item? And I'm seeing heads shaking no. Okay, that's fine. All right, well, then, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move the planning commission to close the public hearing and recommend the city council approve the use of funds for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program as set forth in the 2020 fund summary as recommended by staff or as amended.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? So let the, well, it was moved by Commissioner Cochran, seconded by Commissioner A. Compost, and let the motion pass unanimously. We will not see this again, or we will?
Nope. It'll go to the workshop on August 5.
Okay, great. So now that moves us to item D, Block Grant, 2020 Home Fund allocations, master file BGAP 2019-004. It was continued on from a previous meeting, and so I'll hand this back over to staff to give us any further information.
Well, again, not a lot. You can see, though, the contingent project would be the low barrier or supportive housing, it's called in this, in this report, but we're estimating that we have almost $800,000 in the home funds that are yet unspent from CHODO-based projects. And by the way, there are, there's one CHODO organization in the tri-cities, and that's Habitat for Humanity, and that's, that's a real problem, because if they're doing a project, they're, they're full, they can't do anything more, and the money doesn't get used. So you're looking, I think, I think we're in our third year of not having a project for CHODO-based, or CHODOs. So anyway, though, there's that as a contingency, and then the, the home funds themselves are used for first-time homebuyer assistance for down payments and closing costs for purchasing single-family homes.
If I can add just a little something, especially for the new commissioners, in terms of what we call a CHODO, the challenge with, with funding CHODOs is not unique to Pasco, and the reason for that is, one, that. And um, the, the reason for that is um, one, that while you have maximum amounts you can spend in some categories like human services or administration, uh, nothing has a floor, uh, except for CHODOs. You must allocate a certain amount of your uh, grant toward CHODO activities. And um, the challenge with getting CHODOs certified is that they aren't just a nonprofit that does housing. There are very specific requirements uh, about your board composition, low moderate-income residents on the board, serving the population that your, your CHODO uh, serves. And for a lot of established organizations, it's not that they don't have the capacity to do th- this kind of work, but they're not willing to change their board composition to qualify for a pot of money when they can still go and get money through CDBG and Home uh, or NSP without being a CHODO. Um, and and so, and a lot of times you try to force them to that point, but then you end up doing very little housing. That's why things like down payment assistance and rehab uh, rehab assistance uh, are used pretty commonly because there often is a backlog of CHODO organizations um, and and those getting certified, especially in smaller communities. And Puget Sound, you really don't have much of a, a challenge finding CHODOs uh, that you do in Eastern Washington quite a bit. And a lot of that, I think here is we have uh, organizations that are Tri-Cities oriented. So you know, if you're going to use that money in Pasco, you're going to have to have the specific membership composition to Pasco. And that takes away from what your greater organization probably is chartered uh, to be composed of.
Mr. Morales, you're a mind reader and you just answered my question. Thanks. So any other questions?
I was just looking at the proposed activities and it states that funding is first targeted in the Longfellow and Museum neighborhoods. Are those because they're the lowest income?
Yes.
And um, and then under recommendations, the second sentence talks about the contingent, a contingent project for new construction infill or tenant-based rental assistance. Can you talk a little bit about the tennis-based, tenant-based rental assistance? Is that something that we've done before?
Um, we haven't done projects, but the, that language has been in previous um, the, in in all these cycles because there's always the opportunity to do that, like there might be this year with the low barrier housing.
Thank you. Good question. Any others?
So Rick, several years ago Catholic Charities came to us um, and had an application for East Pasco. It was close to uh, I think Virgie Robinson, I want to say. And did they ever build that out?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they did. Uh-huh. There's two in Pasco now. There's, um, I can't remember what that's called.
Does that qualify as CHODO?
No, it doesn't. Um, yeah, there's one there and there's one uh, just north of the Benton Franklin um, Transit Center on t- uh, what is it?
Oh, yes.
Twenty eighth?
Yes.
Twenty, or maybe it's not twenty, twenty-second?
Right, right behind.
Twenty-second Sylvester.
If I can also, that, I was.
Bishop Tobal Housing.
Yes, I, I know that one.
That was another part of my CHODO uh, answer to you all was that um, Catholic Charities inherently is not one that becomes a CHODO, uh, because when I was on the Catholic Charities uh, of Diocese of Yakima on board for about a dozen years. And so what happens when you set up one of these units, for anything that Catholic Charities does, the bishop is the CEO or the president ultimately. That's, it's just the nature. It's, and so there's, uh, we had to do a little bit of gymnastics to actually qualify for some USDA loan guarantees for projects we did um, to get some exemption. But um, essentially what, the same Catholic Charities Housing Corporation Board that exists just gets a new name, LLC Single Purpose Corporation, that is the new entity for this one. So Hacienda del Sol, whatever Pasco they want to call it, that'll be a new LLC set up for them. And but that same board will be in place for that. So again, composition of that board, if you were trying to do CHODO work everywhere you're at, you're going to have different boards all over the place. And when you're a diocese, that gets more difficult to manage. Um, parishes are probably hard enough, so um, that's, that's a reason why you, you might not see them fall into the CHODO category uh, for this project or, or any of the others.
Thank you for that information. We're learning a lot tonight. Um, so any further questions about home investment partnership? Okay, I don't see any. So although, then I would entertain a motion. If anybody's willing to go forward?
I move the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the use of funds for the twenty twenty home investment partnerships entitlement as recommended by staff or as amended.
All right?
Second.
Okay. I heard two people say that. All right, so um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Cochran, and it passed unanimously. So this will go to, this, this ends here, right? We approve it?
Yeah, well, it goes to the council workshop again on the fifth, or uh, second Monday in August.
Okay, so that brings us to uh, public hearing item E, block grant twenty twenty neighborhood stabilization program, uh, NSP fund allocations master file BGAP two thousand nineteen dash zero zero five. And this is also continued from a previous meeting. So I'll hand it back over to you.
Almost the exact same story, except it's a different pot of money, so it's called something different. The na, it's called NSP money. And this was given to the city in twenty twelve when there were, nationwide at least, there was a number of um, twenty teens, excuse me, the, uh, there was a, there were a number of foreclosures and the federal government was concerned about the impacts on communities. Uh, we used our monies to uh, rehabilitate and then later sell uh, foreclosed homes. Uh, that exact same program is proposed to be used for the monies we have from program income, just like the home funds that where people pay back down payments or sell their homes and they have to, they have a loan to pay back based on their no-interest rate deferred loan from the NSP pot of money. So again, same program, we have to use the money for uh, the same thing we used it for in the first place or for a project that meets uh, the contingencies as the low-barrier housing project would do.
Okay, thank you.
Quite, quite a bit less money, but same, exact same idea.
Any questions from commissioners to staff about this item? Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
So was the updated sheet because the, the numbers got updated?
The, yeah, we, between last month and now, we received another payment from a home that sold that was utilizing NSP monies and then we added the contingency.
And um, I was just curious in the, going back to the first page, the second paragraph, it talked about down payment assistance has been provided to twelve homebuyers. I'm just wondering, when was this last computed or calculated, how recently?
You mean the number of homebuyers helped?
Yeah.
I, uh, I don't think it has been. That's, that's the total so far of the program.
Okay, so when was that, when did we do twelve?
Between now and twenty ten.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Is there anybody in the audience uh, who would like to come speak to this item? Okay, all right, so I'm getting some no's and if not, then I would entertain a motion.
I'm with the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the use of funds for twenty twenty neighborhood stabilization program, NSP. Entitlement set forth above as recommended by staff.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
I'm with the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve the use of funds for the twenty twenty neighborhood stabilization program, NSP. Entitlement set forth above as amended. I don't think we have to do that one.
Oh, wait.
Yes.
Oh, so there's.
I recant that.
Okay, so moved by Commissioner A. Compost, seconded by Commissioner by Conan. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. We're doing it for the original motion, the first one, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, all right, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And what will happen to this item?
I keep saying August fifth. It's the second Monday in August for the regular council workshop.
Okay, and then that brings us to our, that's the last public hearing item that brings us to other business. Um, and we have a comprehensive plan update.
Yes, we do. Um, you, I, I really just wanted to get this material into your hands. Uh, it, it's obviously in draft form and I, it's, I'm just imploring that you read it. Uh, there'll be a presentation later from our consultant and staff, but I, I thought that the earlier you can get a hold of it, the, the better chance you'll have at least to read it through and you be, become familiar. And then when we have the presentation, it won't be like drinking out of a fire hose, as the saying goes. Um, but we intend to, uh, and then I'll, I'll have to get to another item about the meeting date in August or the meeting, uh, regular meeting in August. But the consultant is doing a lot of work and we're starting to get a lot of products. Uh, the Broadmoor traffic analysis, which is really important, even though it's not for the overall city comprehensive plan, is being used as a springboard for the traffic analysis for the broader urban growth boundary expansion area. Because first of all, it's in the same area and mu- many of the transportation facilities will be used for that area as well as Broadmoor. So uh, they're working away. We expect to have the fifth, sixth, and seventh sets of documents within a week or so. Uh, additional chapters in the comprehensive plan and I'll send those out probably electronically. But I, I don't want to go through this tonight. It's, it's, we're not ready for that yet. Um, but if you have questions, I'd be, try to uh, answer them. I'd be happy to do so. Or if you have any thoughts or uh, ideas on the process itself or what you'd like to see in terms of how we can help you understand, you're going to get a very large document pretty quick here. And we, we're going to try to have this wrapped up by the end of the year. So it'll be, there'll be a lot of work to do in the, in the coming months.
So I, I read through part, the first part of it and I got to something that I didn't know what it was. And it says that County Industrial L A M I R D. It's an abbreviation and I don't know what that stands for. It wasn't explained in the.
Yeah, it's a County Lamrid. Um, I can't remember what it stands for.
Stand for?
Um, it has something to, yeah, I, I don't remember the acronym. Yeah, but, but it's a, it's a way to do certain things in, in their industrial areas.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Cochran?
Yeah, I mean, I, sort of, I wouldn't ask you to go through the document. Are there any areas that are themes or focus areas in terms of the revision and update that the staff is focusing on or?
Well, I, thank you for asking. Um, one of the, and by the way, there's this companion effort going on for the Broadmoor draft environmental impact statement. And one of the things we've been pleasantly surprised about, and I think I mentioned this last month, was um, the mix of land uses in Broadmoor really contributed to an, an overall decrease in um, and and Jacob can pitch in whenever he needs. He's, Jacob, by the way, is our transportation expert without a doubt. But the vehicle miles traveled went down significantly based on the mix and the higher densities associated with the Broadmoor preferred land use effort. We've mimic that in the urban area north of Broadmoor. And so uh, the map that you'll see, uh, there's, uh, if the commission recalls, at least the commission members were here, that urban area expansion, when you first saw that forty-eight hundred acre expansion, that area was almost completely yellow, which means low density. And now take a look at it, it's a, a nice rainbow. It has commercial, higher density, low density, some public space, and I can't remember what that other color is. But, but I think you should focus on that mix of land uses, particularly in the urban area. And um, I know it's difficult reading, but if you can go through the chapter that deals with the land capacity analysis, yeah, you don't, you don't have to memorize, I mean, you know, but if you can just get an idea of the thinking that goes behind how we plan for fifty thousand more people, that, that would, I think, go a long way towards helping you, the commission, understand the, the coming document that you'll be getting in about sixty days.
Thank you.
I, I just want to say thank you for that and thank you for, I know it's probably taken a lot of work to do this because when we first uh, applied to OFM with our uh, proposal for the annex, like a year ago, over a year ago, um, and we had those different options, those three different options to choose from, it was primarily yellow. And we had uh, problems stomaching that, I know there were different commissioners here at that time, um, because it was so low-density residential. And we were struggling with the fact of how do we get all this population that we know is coming into a small area? And we can't do it with um, like RS twelves and RS twenties, which is what's going on.
Half-acre lots.
Right. So I really appreciate seeing the, the rainbow colors in this uh, new area, uh, future city area.
And, and I, I'm trying to be funny, but um, there, there will always be place, we need places for big lots in Pasco, just like we need places for lots that aren't big in Pasco. Um, you, you might also take a look as, the next time you're driving through Court, down Court Street, particularly as you get west of, let's say, road forty-eight, or even, yeah, road forty-eight, let's say. That was the former Riverview area that was developed in Franklin County. And the, the development pattern that was set in that area is very hard to, it's very hard to densify that area of Pasco. Streets don't go through if they were ever intended to go through. Utility systems aren't always available. Sewer is not available to most of the former Riverview area and maybe will never be because without through streets, it's very expensive and difficult to get sewer and even water to certain areas. You can't have long dead-end water lines and you can't have sewer lines in areas that are lower than the next collection pipeline. So at the staff level, Public Works and Planning are working actually very hard trying to identify what is the development potential of Riverview. And we're getting assistance from an engineering firm on that endeavor. But um, there, it, we might end up with the conclusion that it doesn't make sense to spend money trying to densify Riverview because the, the pay, it doesn't pencil out. There aren't enough ratepayers to fund a lift station to get sewer to those low-line areas, for example. Or the road that deadends in front of somebody's front door to their house is never going to go through, so don't bother with it. You might want to keep that in mind.
And so it doesn't also make sense and pencil out for developers who.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, it might if they, hence the popularity of half-acre lots. Because you can get a septic system and if you have city water, you're set to go. So there are, and it's a, it is kind of a problem because um, there's no incentive to do anything different than half-acre lots. And Jacob's taken a very hard look at that land capacity analysis at those areas that uh, have the development potential for increased density and that, that's, that goes into our factoring. So we reduced that forty-eight hundred acre expansion by about fifteen hundred acres. Yeah, maybe not quite fifteen hundred, but I think it's down, I think we're down to thirty-four hundred in one of the alternatives instead of forty-eight hundred.
I had a question. Does that change any of the plans for the annexation in that area?
No, no, it doesn't, although I, I don't think there's a crying need to take a lot of those problems on.
Yes.
I mean, eventually it'll probably be an annex, but I don't know that it's a priority or a crisis.
Are you ready for Lamrids?
Excuse me?
Are you ready for Lamrids?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you know what it is? Did you look it up on your phone? Oh.
Limited area of more intensive rural development.
Yeah, that's it.
Wat, Watcom County has got a pretty good descriptor on.
Limited area of what?
More intensive rural development.
Wow. Thank you for that.
Watcom County, look it up.
Okay.
Google.
Overachiever here.
So, I think that's our last thing. Is there anything else, Rick, that you want to tell us about?
Well, just, just real briefly, we don't have any current items for August 5th. Yeah, August 15th.
You wanted to say August 5th again.
I did.
Yeah, there's something happening on August 5th. What's happening on August 5th?
It is, I think I'd start vacation or something. But the, so the 15th is clear. We can, we can certainly work on a workshop item, comprehensive plan, or we can move that to the September meeting. But that, you know, that, that always-going mode is going to slow down a bit because the hearing examiner, remember, is taking the current applications on the second Wednesdays of each month. So, last, last week, I think she had, gosh, I think she had six items on the, on the agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Wow.
And the week, the month before that was six items. And we have several lined up for, for her in September as well. So, if those weren't going to her, they'd be going to you.
So, we're having zero buyer's remorse right now, basically.
Are those telling us too?
Yeah, you tell me.
Commissioner Bowers has a question, I believe.
So, I was just looking at the, under housing, some of the goals and policies and H4 basically talks about affordable housing on page 18 in the housing element. So, this is where home and NSP and CHODOs, all that stuff would, would fall.
Yeah, and the ability to do PUDs and the, you know, the, the thing the commission checked several, I guess, two months, well, maybe not two months ago, but the, the ability to create lots that don't have public furniture, public street furniture, some, the height for, on tonight's agenda. Those are all things that we hope contribute in various ways to more, more affordable housing.
More affordable housing, okay. Thank you.
So, under Plan Concept, does that, does that include what I was talking about earlier with the, the feature design and amenities? Would that, would those ideas come, fall under there in the comprehensive goals?
I'm sorry, you know, where is that again?
It's under Growth Management, the Plan Con, Concept. I don't know the page number now. I'm sorry. I don't know the page number by heart. But I'm almost positive we're going to come back to this, so I can have that page number for you.
Well, yeah, and I can, I can take a look and when I find it, and then I'll just shoot an email to the entire commission.
So, how, what's your estimate of how long we'll be working on this, till November? Or is it going to be overshoot November?
No, it'll, it'll be all the way till the end of December.
Okay.
And as things normally go, we'll probably end up going past the day we're supposed to be done, which is the end of December. So, you might end up toying with this in January. I hope not, but it might happen.
So, do commissioners have a preference? Do we want to work on, do a workshop item in August or would we like to take August off and just come back to it in September? So, Commissioner Cochran says he's on vacation in August, so we've got one down.
I'd almost prefer to take a whole, if we're just going over this, having this attached to, at the end of our meetings can be really burdensome sometimes.
Absolutely agree.
And I think that it's important to give it our best shot. So, I'd say that this has worked out pretty good.
To save it for August, okay. Any other opinions?
What, what day are we talking in August?
August 15th.
Okay.
Okay, so, August sounds good. We'll workshop this item in August and...
We'll, we'll send the material out.
Electronically?
Probably, yeah, probably before the, when we normally send it out because it's probably going to be a lot.
Yay. All right, well, thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, all right, so, just want to say thank you for bearing with me. I had a new meeting script tonight, but otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to call it quits. I'm just joking. We have to, we have to explain jokes. I just said I had a new meeting script. Never mind, guys. Okay, so, that's all for tonight. Anybody else have anything that they want to? No, okay, thanks.